Good evening and welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, December 8th, 2015. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again and good evening. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Louis, here. Landware?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer, here. And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong-long success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up on the agenda is the Heights Lights. The board will honor the Columbia Heights High School Heights Herald for winning the Gold Medallion Award by the Minnesota State High School Press Association, better known as the MSHSP, okay, Minnesota State High School Press Association, and Best of Show. So, we'll start with that. And I think what I'd like to do is, is I'll have Jill, if you would, come up and we'll present the award, and then if you would introduce the members of your staff that are here, that would be great, and they can come up and we can talk to them, too.
You want me to?
Right up here. Unless you want to talk about, why don't you?
No, actually, I'm going to have them accept the award. I'll introduce them, how's that?
Okay, and then should we have them talk about it first?
Sure.
Okay. All right, go ahead Jill, take over.
Well, first, I'm really proud of my staff, and I think as you were reading the mission statement and the core values, they represent all of those. And I can't tell you what that means, and I think it shows in their work, and that the state recognized that, too, I think is just fabulous. So, it's my honor to recognize co-editor-in-chief Kaitlin Krueger, and Janessa Moan is the other co-editor-in-chief, and she's ill today, Fatima Jalani, and she's our news editor, Domenica Leerna, and she's our opinion editor, Tenzin Naema, and she is our variety editor, Michael O'Leary, he's the sports editor, and Stephanie Avalos, the feature editor. So, I will have them come up and talk a little bit about the award, and then they can receive it since it's theirs.
Perfect.
Where are we going?
You can sit, you can go right there, and sit down if you want.
Hi, thank you so much for honoring us tonight and having us here, it means a lot, and it really meant a lot to all of us to win this award because it was, you know, kind of like a state-recognized award. All the high schools in Minnesota that had a journalism program were competing here, and we basically won like the biggest award that we could have won there, and it was nice to, you know, do that. I don't know.
Okay, we're all like new here as editors, and you know, we felt kind of proud because we won the award, and it was like our first month of layout, and then we were like, oh, we don't know what to do, so we kept asking Jungers and Michael, because he was on the staff last year for being his editor, so we felt like really accomplished because we did it, and it was our first time.
I do have something here that was a press release, and I'll read that if that, if it's okay, that actually describes the award itself, and it was from November 9th, and it said, "The Heights Herald, Columbia Heights High School Student Newspaper, produced by the Journalism II Class, was awarded a Gold Medallion Award by the Minnesota State High School Press Association. The class received the award October 6th, 2015, at the MSHSPA State Journalism Convention. The Gold Medallion Award is awarded to the Minnesota High School Papers that exceed rigorous criteria, which includes excellent writing, good coverage of events happening in the school and the community, efficient editing," that's you guys, you're the editors, good job, "design with a clean format that is eye-appaling, and clear photos that capture the moment. The Heights Herald also won the Best in Show for the top student newspaper submitted at the convention." So, that's awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add to that, or?
No.
I think what we'll do next, if you're okay with this, Casey, is I'm going to have all of you guys come on up, and I'll read and then hand you the certificate. Can you bring that microphone with you when you come up? Come on up here, guys. Columbia Heights Herald, Columbia Heights High School, is recognized for being awarded a Gold Medallion Award and Best in Show by the Minnesota State High School Press Association. Thank you for representing the Columbia Heights School District, congratulations.
This is the great way to start out a meeting.
I'd also like to say congratulations to Jill Jungers. I know that you're, you know, given the students, they're doing their recognition, but I personally recognize the driving force that you are behind the paper, and you do an excellent job, so thank you as well. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
Some of. Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion. And this is for the approval of the agenda. And actually, I'll read the announcements first, and then we'll come back to the vote. December 15th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, special call, School Board Meeting. December 24th through January 4th, school break, no school, winter break. January 5th, Tuesday, 8:00 PM, the organizational meeting here in the community room. January 12th, 7:00 PM, regular School Board Meeting. January 19th, at 5:00 PM, School Board Listening Session, and January 19th, 5:30, School Board Works Session. So, with the approval, now move to the approval of the agenda. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair Members, there's none at this time.
Okay, thank you. Communications to the Board. Citizen and employer representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request administration follow-up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I have no blue cards, is anyone here to speak? Okay, not see anyone there. Next up is the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of the November 10th and 24th Board Meetings, and the November 17th School Board Work Session, the Personnel Report, and the Treasures Report for October 15th. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
All moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all who's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acknowledgements of Contributions. My next page. Page 32, okay. We have a resolution to read for that. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please? Simone?
Second.
Laura? I'll read it and then open for discussion. Acknowledgements of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupil, of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $325. And under the detailed background and monetary, a donation of $140 is made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Matching Gift Programs for Student Needs, and under Value and Kind, donations of scarves to Valley View Elementary by Beth Jacobs for Student Needs, estimated value of $60, and a donation of nine winter jackets to Highland Elementary by David De Jarnet Agency for Students in Need, estimated value of $125. Total fiscal year 2015-2016 monetary contributions to date, $19,532.19. Any discussion?
I think it's an amazing number, to date, $19,000, that's very generous. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? No further discussion, if you would, please do roll call.
Louis? Aye. Landware?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion Reports, Information Items, Reports from Members of the Board. Board Members will report on Board Activity since the last regularly-scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Laura?
Okay, well, I attended the monthly 9/16 Board Meeting. Couple of updates, one, we did have our financial audit, and everything came back good. We also had the final financial audit for Valley Crossing. That is a school that was kind of put together under a collaboration by a couple of different school districts. They decided they were going to collaborate for a grade, a grade school. And since that time, when, South Washington is actually going to be taking over that particular, that particular school, but it's going to happen at the end of the next fiscal year, so that ought to be, once that transition is over, it's not going to be part of the 9/16 oversight. The next thing is, we did pass, approve various contracts for the Pancalo location, so we can get, start getting that building. So, we had quite a number of bids. If anybody wants to see the details, I can certainly pass that along in the update. And, but the, one of the other good news things is that we actually just approved a resolution to, I mean, we just approved another school district participating in 9/16. So, now St. Francis is also part of our collaboration, which is wonderful. It's probably not going to make a huge impact as far, because it's a fairly small school district, but every school district that participates in this actually reduces our costs. You know, it's fairly small, small district, it's not a huge population, but, you know, every little bit helps, and they've already been using a lot of our services now, so there can be very minimal impact on accommodating the member districts. So, I thought that was pretty cool. Anyway, I also attended the special meeting last week to canvas the votes. That's it.
Molly?
I attended the special call meeting to canvas the votes last week as well, and then attended some boys' basketball games over at Irondale High School last week.
Thanks. Ted?
I attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting. Also attended the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly on Saturday, Friday night and Saturday. The resolution, there was full participation from all of our area schools. We're in Area 13, so Noka, Hennepin, Fridley, St. Francis, ourselves, all were there. So, it was well-represented. The resolutions that were passed, or that were considered are on the MSBA website, so I would encourage you to take a look at those. And so, that's what the MSBA will be lobbying for at the legislature in the next session. And also, the discussion of each resolution is also on the MSBA website. I attended the WEMAP Executive Committee Meeting. I apologize for not being here for the specially-called meeting, but that was the reason I wasn't here. The WEMAP Executive Committee Meeting, had quite a lengthy discussion. We're going to have a Board Meeting tomorrow evening with the Joint Powers Board. The, just to, I know we're going to have a more robust discussion in this meeting on that, but just briefly, the budget that WEMAP, the reserve is around 1.5 million. They're still auditing the finances, so we should have a complete audit by the end of this month, hopefully. There's concern that, still concern that the part of that budget would go to, to taking care of deferred maintenance on the fair schools, both Robbinsdale and Minneapolis, who received the schools. If that were true, that would be about $800,000, so that would just leave WEMAP with $640,000 left as a reserve. So, that's a big concern because that could be used up very quickly, if, in about a year and a half, on projection. So, we'll know more about the exact numbers once the audit takes place and is completed. Also attended AMSD Meeting last Friday. The materials are in your Board Packet. They passed the resolutions, or the legislative positions for AMSD, and then also had a discussion on early child education to give, the governor is seeking input on how to improve early child education, and a lot of the time was spent discussing proposals to give to the governor on how to improve that. So, and I believe there's still public process in place through, I think, MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, on that, so if you have comments or concerns, that, they're still collecting those. Also attended a meeting with Superintendent Kelly, thank you for your time, and then with Board Members, and then Lions and Chamber Meetings, and talked to several constituents.
Okay, thanks. I also attended the special meeting to canvas the votes last week, and then I attended the Chair Meeting prior to this meeting. That's it. Superintendent's Report.
Mr. Chair Members, the admin team continues to prepare an aquatic safety policy to present to the School Board Subcommittee on Policy in January. As you remember, we've been starting from scratch on that with a little bit of help from St. Louis Park and a lot of help from our legal team. We feel that because we're going to expand our programs and have even more robust swimming practices within our curriculum, that it's imperative that the Board looks and establishes the policy. MSBA does not have one. And so, the recent draft, which we think is almost our final draft, is now over at the District Insurance, having them review for liability flags, and then, and we'll look at the costs on that, and then we'll have that prepared for our first Subcommittee on School Board Policy in January. So, looking forward to presenting that to all of you. It's a pleasure for me always to continue to meet with the internal superintendent mentees who are working on toward their superintendent license, and as you know, we have two this year, and it's always a joy to see how they're growing, both in their craft and in their profession. They're doing some really nice projects, and I, and I think that you'll see some of them. Adam Nelson, of course, has helped us with the entire special election, so he is getting some above and beyond help as far as election results, and Principal Sasek is doing some amazing work in conjunction with Director Standvik around integration that will be part of a presentation to you in 2016. The E-12 Admin Team met for additional professional development around American Indian education. It was another really nice look at what we're doing and our thoughts. We're still reading our book, and we're preparing for our discussions with our author when he presents in January, in which all of you are invited if you'd like to come to the January end service and hear him speak as well. Principal Sasek and the Cunningham Group presented research to the management team, conducted around the Learning Studios and its impact on student learning, excuse me, that was really to the whole admin team. That was fascinating, and it's the first time that we've really had a national research project, and so, we'd like to bring that to the Board in 2016 and have you see what they're learning as well, just really some fascinating things. Local 710 Licensed Labor Management met for its, its meeting with administration, and we had some lively discussion around competitive grants, the calendar, and elementary conferences at that meeting. St. Anthony New Brighton came over to talk with the Columbia Heights team regarding some of our integration planning that we did this summer. Remember, we did that summer seminar class, and was held in this very room, and it was an amazing success, both on the parts of academics, integration, equity, and we debriefed. And it was just a joyous meeting, I have to say for myself, and we'd like to carry on. And so, some of the plans would be is that we take the same cohort of students and get them together early in 2016, and do some research around a special topic, and perhaps take them on some field trips around equity throughout this school year. The, the group of kids that merged together are still texting and corresponding with one another, and cheering one another on when they play one another at, at games, or see one another at games. So, that, it was, that was just last night, and it was really a fun meeting to be a part of. I, I met with Scott Kruenquist from AMSD and the Executive Director from MSBA on issues of elections, what kind of the poster child for the amount of elections and the impact on the system, and both were very generous in saying that they will take this back to their organizations, and they're really soliciting data on elections, and also, we had some conversations about possible legislation that's already in the hopper around recall of school board members, and that they, whereas I didn't think they were all tied together, it seems to be at the legislature an issue that is tied. So, I wouldn't be surprised if we are called upon to do some testifying, and we said we would be happy to, but we're not actively lobbying for this, nor, but we just wanted people to know about our experience and the impact and the cost of what we're experiencing. Let me see, Director Holmgren and I met with Vice Chair Landware, and then Ted and I met a little bit longer after that, also had a meeting with Chair Larkin, I attended the canvas meeting, and Chair Meeting prior to this Board Meeting. And that concludes my report, thank you for spending time with me.
Thank you. Next up is the Building Vision Card for North Park Elementary, and we have, looks like a host of people.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, I am pleased to be here this evening with the North Park Admin Team, Principal Sasek, and Dean Sturm. We're here this evening to present the North Park Elementary Score Card. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Sasek.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, Members of the Board, good evening. Thanks for having us here this evening for our vision card presentation for the year. We also have some, some fun things to share towards the end, but we'll start with the nuts and bolts, of course, and probably, of course, our mission and our core values. One of the more important pieces of data that we look at every year is enrollment, and as you can see, North Park has been on a pretty good trend here for a period of time. I'm going to start that over because I have the wrong presentation. My apologies, it's the old one that we didn't fix. This is not on TV, is it?
Not yet.
We edit it before we put it on TV, right? Well, perhaps this is the one that we have for the evening, so, my apologies again. So, this is, you'll see last year's data, but what you see is, you see an upward trend, an upward trend and a stabilization. This number puts us last year at 489 on this date. This year, we are too shy of that, at 487, and we have two folders sitting on Karen's desk for students who were supposed to start this week, so we would have been at 489. Either way, we are surpassing capacity because our capacity is 460. Our demographics, first, we'll look at free reduced lunch. We're at 78% free lunch with 22% of our students who are not eligible. Special education, we remain steady. We are at the same exact percentage we had last year, at 15.4%. As you know, we have three of our four setting three programs in the district at North Parks. We have two of our DCD programs and our autism program, which brings our numbers up a bit, but that's something that, that pleases me as a special educator quite a lot. And we have 32.5% of our students are English learners, which is a bit of a decline, surprisingly, from last year, we were at 36%. AYP data, so if you see, in both math and reading, we actually made modest gains last year, right around 2% in each area. It certainly is short of what our goal is and what we hope to see, but we are certainly pleased that it was a gain nonetheless. In science, you'll see, we made a little bit of a dip. That is, we went from 48% to 46.6%, that's one difference of one student, but nonetheless, we like to be, we like to be around 50 or higher at North Park in our science, so that's something that certainly caught our attention, but we're also very pleased that we're outperforming most of the schools that are, that surround us in neighboring districts in science. Thank you, Stan Maras, of course. If you take a look at the course of the strategic roadmap, you'll notice that we have a box around the two that I've spoken about over the past few years that have been very important to us, that, you know, we really like to turbocharge and we like to innovate, but we've expanded it a bit this year. We've also put a lot more time and energy into telling our story, which is really important to us, especially the story of the Learning Studios. And in addition, we've really worked on doing our best to close the opportunity gap, you know, we always hear a lot about the achievement gap, but really, the achievement gap's a result of the opportunity gap. So, if you look at our scorecards, again, this is a turbocharging piece. Our licensed staff are active in PLCs, so we're in a progressing area for that, and we also are in the, the vision area for using articulated standards-based curriculum, which of course, that's 100%. And again, our next piece, we've got, we are at a progressing area for presence of 21st Century Learning in our classrooms, so we're between 81, 81 and 89% for that, and we are at vision for percentage of our teachers being evaluated at basic and above. So, if you look at closing gaps, which is something that we're, again, very much focused on this year at North Park, our MAP scores, now that's something that's going to be a bit passe because we only do the MAP test with second grade now. It is certainly saving the district some money, but we also get a lot better data from the OPA, which is the MCA Practice Test, and so, like I said, we're only seeing the MAP being used in second grade. And then also, if you look at our MAP growth, that is the area where we are progressing. And as you know, when we're looking at AYP, it's kind of like, we keep calling it AYP, I'm not certain that that's the correct terminology anymore because it's the MMR, and one-third of your score for the MMR is, is individual growth. And so, that individual growth piece, and then also the closing the gap pieces, those are really important to us, and they're something that we really focus, we really attend to on a regular basis. If you look at our MCAs, of course, we are at the intervention level. We are at a 40% in reading and a 42% in math, which is not where we want to be, but as I said before, they, they did show some modest gains. We are in the progressing level for science at 46.6%, and our achievement gap is at the baseline level. The largest gap was between our white students and our African, African-American students, which was in reading, and it was at right around 30%. And again, closing the gap again. We actually saw an interesting or somewhat worrisome change in the gap between change in the gap between student groups. We had been in the progressing level last year and the year before. And last year, we actually had a 57% gap between our African, African-American students and our Latino students, which basically was a result of our Latino students receiving far fewer referrals than previous years and some of our African, African-American students receiving a few more. And there are just a few number of kids that kind of helped to create that result. We're hoping, we're quite sure, in fact, that it's an anomaly because we've been studying our numbers quite a lot this year thus far, and they're down significantly. And I look forward to presenting that data next year, actually. And of course, we are, as usual, at the vision level for out-of-school suspensions. We have very few of those at North Park. So, our SMART goals. It is our goal next year that we would like to rise to 50% in both math and reading proficiency. So, that would result in an 8% increase in math and a 10% increase in reading. And we'd also like to see a decrease of 10% with students being sent to Time to Think. And thus far this year, it's going to be quite a lot greater than 10% from what we've seen. And we also would like to see the difference between student groups and referrals out of class to be at least in the progressing column. We want to get back there. At this point, I'm going to turn the mic over to Tanya Sturm for some of the more fun things.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Kelly and Chair Larkin, members of the board. Thanks for having us here. Thanks also for your support of the LEVI so that we could engage with personalized learning this year in fifth grade. Our fifth grade students are back where they started in their learning studio career, in what was the second grade learning studio. It's now the fifth grade learning studio. And most of us remember to call it that most of the time now. So, we're really thrilled to see our kids engaging with personalized learning, something that we've been truly trying to sort out for years now at North Park. And so, it's really nice for us to have an improved framework and to have more support for that work. So, thank you for that. As Principal Sasek talked about, our literacy scores are something that we need to attend to. We are very focused, particularly in grades K through three with regard to that. Our kindergarten team is working with Deb Peterson and is having weekly meetings with me and is collecting, has been collecting baseline data for several weeks to determine just how much time they truly are spending in each of the various areas of small group instruction, whole group instruction, and individual work time, so that we can see if we're really meeting those targets. And then Deb is going to help us to determine how we can better utilize our time and where we can tweak things a little bit. Our first grade team has a meeting coming up to look at what data they've collected so far this year and so that we can better determine a plan of action to also work with Deb Peterson. Second grade will be supported a great deal by our reading intervention specialist, Jenny Paxton, who we are thrilled to have in that position. They have a significant number of students who are reading below grade level, and we want them leaving second grade at grade level. So, we are targeting those students and their learning with the help of our reading intervention specialist. Our third graders have a half an hour a day in addition to their regular literacy time called power reading. The kids are so excited about it. They're like, yeah, we're power readers. And they are, it's, I mean, it's weird because it's not to any of us who'd come in and look and go, they're excited about that. They are excited about that. They are so thrilled to be finding success for this half an hour a day, working in really small groups. So, I'm in there for this half an hour. We have some parent volunteers. We have our lunch duty monitors staying a little bit extra to volunteer their time. We have, Jeff comes in from time to time. Am I missing?
Jill, our school health aide.
Thank you.
Any adult that has, you know, the time to give is coming in. So, we have anywhere from probably 10 to 15 adults that are involved on a daily basis.
Yeah, and it's so much fun to see the kids all excited. And they'll come running in the morning and say, I practiced my words last night. And, you know, I finally get it. And you can just see the learning happening. So, it's really fun to have this focus in third grade, and we're excited. Another thing we're really thrilled about this year is our kids spending a little bit more time outdoors. And they're doing that in the morning time. So, we've finally had some conversation with our bus company and with Tom Foley and Bill Holmgren and Lynda Andert and, and, and so many folks that are involved in making sure that our kids have a safe place to play in the morning. So, we have a plan with the bus company now. They've agreed to have everyone there by a certain time so that they're not driving on our playground so that our kids can use that playground in the morning, just like they have for a long time at both our other elementary schools. So, we're just thrilled with that, that the power of play and the power of fresh air on a student's school day that they're just about to engage with cannot be understated. And our learning as grownups at North Park is continuing. In our leadership team, we are studying for, I think, the fourth year in a row, young, jowls, world-class learners. We are also, this year, taking a look at racing to class on our equity team. Then, the learning that we do on our equity team comes back to our, to our staff meetings on a monthly basis so that they are, we're finding, three years ago, we started with, okay, the first half of our meetings are really going to be devoted to 21st century learning. The second half of our meetings will be devoted to equity. And it's been really fun to watch us come to this understanding that equity is about 21st century learning and 21st century learning is about equity. And so, the marriage of those two things in our practice and in our study is something that we're really committed to.
Which brings us to sharing our story. And I've been fortunate that I've had the privilege to be able to do a lot of this. And really, it's unfair because I do such a fraction of the work. It's the teachers and it's Tanya and so many people that are reinventing what we do on a daily basis. But I, like I said, have been the good fortune, the fortunate one to be able to go out and kind of be the mouthpiece for all the great work that's happening. As you know, about 24 months ago, the University of Minnesota School of Architecture became very interested in what we were doing in our learning studios, in particular Professor John Kamatsi and also Professor Renee Chang. And so, what they've been able to do is they've been able to plant graduate students, graduate students as researchers at North Park for the better part of the last two years. First, we had Matt Tracy. And Matt did some really interesting and pivotal foundational work for about six months. And then we had the good fortune of having Dan DeVoe for about 12 months. And Dan, he did things, well, I won't give away too much because I know that Superintendent Kelly has asked Dan and I to come in and do our presentation at one of your work-study sessions. But Dan actually, he came, he would come in for anywhere from four to eight hours at a time, and he'd pick out four kids and he would just follow them and map what they did all day long. And he really figured out interesting ways to measure engagement, the engagement of our kids. And really, it's the work that he did that has helped us learn so much about what works and better and what doesn't work as well in our, in our learning studios and as design is concerned. The Cunningham Group, who's our group of architects, of course, they were wise enough to hire Matt, or Dan, to hire Dan then. And so, Dan is actually working at Cunningham now, and he's working, a huge part of his job is, are the goings-on at North Park. But we also have had representatives from Cunningham who've been a part of telling our story. And then, of course, Tanya and I at North Park. And there have been several, several presentations that have happened. It started out at the state level. You know, you know about the ones that have happened at Ties and so on. We've done a couple of smaller Massa presentations. Things have really taken off in the last nine months or so. Last May, I wasn't a part of this one, but members of the Cunningham Group and the University of Minnesota went to Atlanta for the annual conference for the Association or the Academy of, is the AIA, which is the American Academy of Architectural Institutes of America is what it is. It's the big one. And they did a presentation on North Park and the learning studios. The members of Cunningham Group, as well as the University of Minnesota, did a larger presentation at Massa at their annual conference in Duluth in September. Then I had the good fortune to go out with the Cunningham Group to San Diego to the, it's the A4LE, it's the Association for Learning Environments Conference, which is a large national conference. And Dan and I gave our presentation there. And we also have been chosen to do our presentation in January for MSBA. And that one will be a little bit different. So, if you're going to be there, I would encourage you to come, but be ready to work because we're going to have about a 15 or 20-minute presentation. And then I'm bringing Tanya along, as well as Jen Howsworth, one of our teachers, and we're going to teach a flipped lesson to the board members. Interiorium, who is one of our supporters through furniture, is going to set up the space as a learning studio. And we're going to dig in. And we're going to show the board members and the superintendents exactly what it means and what it feels like to be in a learning studio, hoping that changing it up like that will, will help to spread the word a little bit more. But as a principal, I could not be more proud of the groundbreaking work that is happening every day at North Park. And it's exciting for me just to have the opportunity to be able to tell this story. So, with that, that concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
How hard is the lesson going to be?
We can differentiate.
I was wondering, you mentioned more outdoor time.
Yeah.
Are the students able to, I know there was concern about not having enough time to, you know, just be outside, let out energy. Is it at a level that people are happy with now?
We could not be more thrilled because it's more. You know, more is always better. And, you know, our bus company has been wonderful in making sure the buses are, you know, cleared by 7:35. So, our students have, you know, a solid 15 minutes to play outside in the morning. And it's, it's just, it's amazing because there's so many kids out there and they're having so much fun. And then, of course, they have the 20 to 25 minutes of playworks at the lunchtime also. And that's something that has actually regained a lot of traction for us this year. We had some really positive staffing changes of the folks that are, that are out there. And they're people that are really invested and well-trained. We actually, to this date, December 8th, have yet to get a behavior referral off of the playground during the lunchtime. And so, students are having a wonderful time and they're active. They have like five to, five to six choices every day of what they can do when they go out. There are stations. It's very organized. And in the past, when we just had recess, kids would go out and they just didn't know what to do, you know? And kids that don't know what to do, sometimes that's trouble, you know?
They find things.
They find things to do, exactly. But now they know what to do and they have an awful lot of fun.
Are you still tracking the results of the learning studio model? And is it still working well?
Absolutely. Yes, it is. And, you know, and I don't want to dig too much into the presentation we'll have in January, but there is one model that definitely works better than the others from a structural standpoint, as far as the space goes. And that's some of the research that Dan has done with the University of Minnesota and the Cunningham Group. It's pretty, it's definitive. And what we are finding, though, is it's the ability to collaborate, not just the students, but especially the adults, and the ability to co-teach that is making all the difference in the world. And in such a short day, it really buys time for learning.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking forward to the presentation. You should have brought it tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, the board will be presented with information on the pay equity report. Lindsay.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here tonight just to present information on the pay equity report. Because we have a lack of board meetings coming up and the report's due by the end of January, I just wanted to prep the board that it's coming this way and just give you a little bit of information about it. So, again, our mission statement is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. When you look at our core values, I'd focus this presentation on the core value of excellence. So, the purpose of the pay equity study is to assure that the institution's not discriminating against female employees in our compensation practices. It's a state report that we have to submit. So, just a little background, we have to file a report in accordance with the State of Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act. The district is required to file this report every three years. The last report was filed in January of 2013, so we're up this January. Goes really fast. Every public sector employer in the state of Minnesota has to file a report, and they just have everybody on a cycle. So, our turn's up. We'll work with Springstead Incorporated on the report. So, I gather all the information, and there's some special system they enter it into, so they kind of process the numbers for us. So, right now, I'm just working on gathering all the data. They look at four tests. So, I'll go through each of those. The first one is the completeness and accuracy test, and that's pretty much just the report has to be submitted by January 31st, 2016. So, as long as we submit the report, we pass test number one. The second test is the statistical analysis test, and it compares salary data to determine if female classes are paid consistently below male classes of comparable work. So, all of our positions have a pointing system, and they ask the pay for each position. And then they determine if there's a female class that's below the male class of comparable work. The salary range test just looks at to see if male job classes are reaching the top of their salary schedule faster than female classes. And then the exceptional service pay test analyzes whether there's a larger percentage of male classes receiving longevity or performance pay than female classes. So, really, the next steps for the board is it will have to be approved on January 12th. So, we do pass that first test, and that's the only board meeting in January so far. So, that's the one it has to get approved at. If we don't file the report by January 31st, we will be found out of compliance and we will be fined. And they can withhold state aid, too, if we don't file it within that time period. And then, again, once we file the report, for some reason, we are out of compliance with one of the tests. They do give us a chance to either resubmit the report and try to correct it, or you can file for reconsideration. So, there's one of those two options. Right now, the report's not complete because it's based on information of December 31st. So, but again, like I said, just because of the lack of board meetings, I kind of had to bring this forward now so you know what's coming and what your role will be. So, that's it, unless there's any questions.
Do you foresee any problems with the pay equity report?
It all depends. Last time, it was the steps to the top. So, the salary range test, we were out of compliance. And all we did was file a reconsideration. So, we submitted the report on time, got a notice that we were out of compliance in that area. And in working with Springstead and the state, they did say we were okay because we're a female-dominated organization. And so, for teachers, it takes 17 years to get to the top step. So, usually that threw us off last time. So, the state honored that, and they said we were fined. So, we just submit a reconsideration. The big thing is, we just have to get the report filed by January 31st.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Discontinuance of programs and positions for 2016, 2017. The board will be presented with information on a resolution directive in the superintendent administration to consider the discontinuance of programs and positions to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures. Lindsay and Bill.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, again, this is something we have to bring earlier because we have a lack of board meetings coming up. It's the resolution of discontinuance of programs and positions that starts the staffing process, which normally we bring in January, but it'll be brought into the one meeting in January as an action item instead. It's an annual process. Nothing changed on the resolution from last time. It's just more to notify the board that this is coming forward. And like I said, it's an annual process. So, we'll bring it forward at the January 12th meeting.
Any questions on that? This is the one that takes place in GOLIS. We get continued information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is early childhood, college, and career guide. The board will present it with the early childhood, college, and career guide.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Director Mahan and I are pleased to come here this evening. Director Mahan and I are pleased to come here this evening to complete the cycle of the college and career guides that we've, that the district has created. We are starting with our youngest scholars now with our early childhood, Creating College and Career Ready Graduates Guide. And this guide very much is both for birth to five years of age, but also for the parents. And you'll see that throughout. The first page is familiar to you. And this is, in this guide, now we add the early childhood. You'll recognize the two mindsets, which was reviewed with you with the elementary school guide. So I won't go over that, except to say that that's very, that's really important information also for our early childhood parents. But I do want to mention the college and career readiness life skills. So these are the life skills that our district created. And we really have embedded those in all of our lesson plans for early childhood. That's ECFE and pre-K 3 and pre-K 4. But also in doing the parent education classes, we really emphasize the life skills and using the specific terms of the life skills as well. With this next page, one of the things that's important to note is that it's never too early to be thinking about your children's development, to be singing and talking and reading with your children, even starting from birth. This next page talks about the importance of literacy. And here, I just wanted to emphasize that for families in which there is a home language that might be different than at the school, it's really important that the children are being exposed to the home language because it really provides that depth of language exposure. Here, it's an indication of different things that you can do, supporting reading with your children, starting from birth, and the importance of just talking with your children, engaging, and then also expanding the conversations with them as is developmentally appropriate. Math is something that you can even start when children are little, singing, engaging them. Children learning patterns is an early math skill. So it's never too early to be engaging your children with math as well, those building blocks that then lead towards the higher level math skills in elementary, middle, and high school. This page gives some specific steps, and this is one of the things that I really appreciate and should have said at the very start of our presentation. We worked closely with Karen Kramer, who was our early childhood manager, and Chris Buzetta, Dr. Buzetta, who is our parent educator with ECFE. And they really went through to make sure that this guide had the most up-to-date research. So the depth of information, the specific suggestions, but also the opportunity for jumping off, we really need to give credit to those two. They were the main, the main authors of this document. And then, starting to save early for college is important, but also really gearing your children towards college and career readiness, even in those early years. And so we give some information about how to start saving for college, and then also how to be talking with your children when you, when you see firefighters, when you see teachers, when you see doctors, to be talking with the children about that. Leading to those professions is a lot of education. And then, goal setting. And this is a document, just like with the other guides, where we are really hoping that the parents are holding on to this and referring back to it over the years. You'll note that there are parent goals in this one. The importance of parents as the first teachers of the children, but for parents to really do some reflecting about their parenting and how they can best support their children's learning. But then also, I always have to, as a former parent educator, put in that plug, that just as children are developing, so too are we as adults, and to be recognizing that and to be supporting our development, too. And that leads us to the end. I encourage you to take some time looking through this document. The pictures are beautiful. Director Mahan did a really nice job of making this guide not only informationally rich, but also visually appealing. So thank you, Director Mahan.
How many languages are we going to have these available in?
Currently, we have it in English. As we can, we are, we're going to try to, excuse me, we're going to try to translate all of our documents.
I think that'd be a wonderful idea. This looks really nice.
Yeah, that's part of our communications plan, is to look at how we can integrate, translate our various documents such as this.
Yeah, especially the earlier childhood ones where, you know, especially the earlier childhood ones to get the building blocks in place right away.
And I'm sorry to just add that in our ECFE program, then, once these are published, that we will be sharing these in our ECFE classes with our pre-K parents, but also really working through these in our ECFE classes, two of which are overtly for English learners, our Spanish ECFE and our ECFE for English learners. So yes, it will definitely be used by people with multiple languages.
And we now have all four of our levels completed. These are also now online, all four of them are online. And we're going to be distributing them probably within the next month.
I just want to applaud you for so much parent information in this. And, you know, the purpose of the school district is to work with parents. It says right in Minnesota law. And so to focus on parents' involvement and help them become better advocates for their children and better educators is fabulous. So it's very attractive, and I'm just very glad that you did it this way. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I just have one question, if that's okay. With the parent goals and things like that, is there a time that this is brought with the teachers? Is that when it's passed out, or is it mailed to them? Does it get followed up on?
Yeah. So with ECFE, it will be distributed in the class. And with all ECFE classes, there's the parent component, the parent education time. So it will be gone over during that time. With our pre-K, we had originally hoped to be able to distribute it at a parent-teacher conference. I'm going to need to see when we actually get these from the printer. And then I'll be talking with Karen Kramer to see when is the most appropriate time for distribution. We do still have another parent-teacher conference scheduled in the late winter, on the same dates as the elementary school conferences are. So it might be the case that it would be most appropriate to distribute it to familiarize the parents at that point. Otherwise, we would be sending it home. And then, with our monthly newsletters, we'd be making reference to it. So I'll be working with our early childhood team to see what they think would be the best distribution time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, especially with a lot of parents not having gone to college or trade school, this really is helpful in that regard to give them the steps, so.
Thank you. I just would add, then, that when children see their parents reading, when parents are doing math at the grocery store, things like that, to be talking about math and reading as well, so that role modeling continues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks great. Next up on the agenda is the West Metro Education Program.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We are here this evening to provide some information about the West Metro Education Program. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools provides worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this evening, our focus will be on the core values of collaboration and courage.
I would just like to interject as we go at this, at this point in time, that I know over the course of the last year and a half to two, we have been talking about our collaboration with the West Metro Education Program. We've also been talking about what it means in the long term for our students. The reason we're doing this, this is a little bit different. We've talked about it, but the reason we're doing this demonstration, this particular presentation, the purpose of this one is to really give you some factual information on some of the questions that you've asked about, how are we using the new WMAP as it has evolved? And what does it look like for us for, in the future? As you know, WMAP, when we went to the premier, asked us to sign a three-year letter of commitment to be part of the organization. And although both members of the Joint Powers Board and the superintendents were surprised by that, it put a lot of the school districts on notice to saying, we're not even quite sure where we stand with this request and are not willing or able at this time to sign a three-year letter, which kicked off conversations, and I think all of the districts, on are we recommitting to the 2.0 or the 2.5 or whatever we're currently calling it or not? And so the purpose of this presentation is to give you a glimpse at what we're doing with WMAP now. And because we have some timelines, to give you some governance questions to think about as far as some recommendations we'll be making about what we want to do with it in the future. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton back to Xena.
Thank you. So this presentation will be framed by four areas that some of the changes to the WMAP consortium may have implications. So we'll be looking at the achievement and integration rule, professional development options, the Columbia Heights Public Schools strategic roadmap, and then financial obligations. So to begin, the state of Minnesota released a new legislation around achievement and integration. So previously, the funding went solely to racial desegregation. And with the new laws in place, the funding can be used for integration and improving academic achievement. So with that being done at the state capitol, now the Minnesota Department of Education is in the process of developing new rules for what that means for school districts. And we hope to have more information from them in January. So taking a look, as you know, West Metro Education Program has had some pretty significant changes this year. And so a brief glimpse of what the previous model looked like and what we're learning about the new model. So in the previous model, we had, we complied with our integration rule through the fair school attendance. We had professional development opportunities for our staff through what they call the cultural collaborative. And then there were different student programs offered. In the new model, the elimination of the integration schools, the professional development is in a tiered manner, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then they continue to offer student programs. So just briefly, my involvement and the involvement in teaching, learning, and curriculum and instruction, and professional development, in the previous model, was largely around the Partner Advisory Group for professional development. So the PAG, Partner Advisory Group, had a clear purpose. We would provide, to provide multiple on-ramps to the work of equity through a protocol in three main areas. So teachers could, and staff could choose different professional development in the focusing on teaching strategies, cultural competency, and then equity leadership. So that's how it was broken down. We had monthly meetings, Fridays, two hours, 9 to 11. And so the members of the Partner Advisory Group, representatives of each of the districts, would come together. Previously, Dwayne Burkas or myself would attend the meetings. During the meetings, it was really about collaborative planning. So this was the group that determined what kind of professional development would be offered, what was the most popular, what was the most successful professional development. We would look at the numbers of attendance. We would look at research and have conversations about what was the best and what would be the most effective for our districts and what could we afford based on usage. So if districts just weren't opting to choose or attend particular sessions, we had those discussions, maybe we should move to something else based on the budget. So that model of PAG ended in June. I guess, just as, to give you some examples of what the, some examples of professional development that our teachers have gone to or that has been offered by WMAP. And again, these sessions were open to any staff member could attend them. So one example offered is My Brother's Keeper, A Courageous Transformation of the Plight of Black Males As We Journey Back to Love, Engagement, and High Achievement. And then, the two-day session, which is most widely attended and offered several times throughout the school year, is Beyond Diversity, A Strategy for Deinstitutionalizing Racism and Improving Student Achievement. So those are two examples of what's been offered. So currently, we're, last fall, we started noticing a substitute shortage, right? So it was really difficult to find and fill any of our subpositions. And so through my work at PAG, I requested several times that we think of other ways and be more creative of how can we provide professional development to our staff, not during the school day? So our teachers, it was really difficult to miss and have five people out of the building, 10 people out of the building. And so we talked about, or I offered the suggestion of summertime, evening time, online, or perhaps looking at the different school districts' calendar to see when their district and service days, and maybe they could bring the training to us. I've heard from teachers saying, if they go to a WMAP session, they want to go with their team, or how nice it would be to have the whole staff learn together. You know, they've really been focused around the PLCs and learning communities. And so that's kind of become the new norm of how they learn. They don't tend to want to go alone. And so accessing some of the courses has been difficult because of the, and again, this isn't a substitute shortage for Columbia Heights, it's metro-wide. Teachers are getting jobs and not having to substitute, which is, in general, probably a positive thing, right? But we need our, we need our subs. So that's been, that's been difficult to not be able to access some of the courses. So moving on, taking a look at the new model for this year, WMAP, instead of Partner Advisory Group, it's called REP or WEREP. So the regional equity partners, so the same group of people coming together. So the purpose of this newly-formed group is, will be aligned with the new service model that we're learning about. Unfortunately, so this is the first year of the new configuration of WMAP, right? So unfortunately, it's been a little bit unorganized with the group. So the schedules have been changed, there's been date and time changes, you know, notifications a couple of days in advance. So that's been a challenge. But we did finally get the list, the calendar dates for the monthly meetings for this group in November. So that's good. Now we've got them all calendared out. I attend them unless there's, for some reason, there's not a, I can't attend, and I send an alternate or a representative. So so far, in this first quarter of WEREP, the new group, it's really been learning, sit-and-get kind of learning where, since we've moved away from the collaborative discussions. And so the goal for, according to WMAP, the goal has been to, let's see, background knowledge building around the customization process, is what we've been doing in the meetings. So in the past, we were create, co-creating. We were not only the customer, but we were, you know, we felt like we were part-owner of the, of the cultural collaboratives and the professional development sessions. So so far, we haven't co-created at this point in the year. With the new WMAP, we haven't been asked for input in terms of what to put on the agendas and what to offer for next year. So we're, so far, we've just been listening and learning about what the new model will look like. So we're going to talk a little bit about what we've, the information that we've been given about the new model and how that is not aligned with our Columbia Heights Public Okay, so before we move on to some of the other pieces that we're learning about WMAP, I want to really focus on what are we doing here in Columbia Heights around equity, right? So we've been a member of WMAP for a long time. Instead of always just going out and seeking information from WMAP, what are we doing here in Columbia Heights? So I wanted to show you this graphic that we use here in-house. We use this graphic to talk about the life skills. So it also applies to our equity work, right? So as you can see, there's a lot of underlying factors of success that, at first glance, aren't visible because they're under the surface, right? So sometimes we look at, we measure success by a test score on one day of the year, for example. But as we know, with our life skills, there's a lot underneath the surface. It takes a lot to get there. So we really apply this also to the equity work. It's a big issue. It's complex. It takes a while to get there. And so I just wanted to kind of frame our discussion or our conversation, or our information with that. So taking equity work in Columbia Heights, really... So, taking equity work in Columbia Heights, really the, from the learning into action and application, right? We really want, we want to, what do we want to see is student success? So, not just adult learning for the sake of learning, but learning to apply it to successful student achievement. To frame our work, any interested staff is avail, is able to join any of the equity teams. Each of our schools have an equity team. One of the projects that the equity teams have worked on recently is to create a rubric for successful implementation. How are we self, how are we setting goals and measuring our success as a school-wide equity team? So, Dean Stern talked about, earlier this evening, talked about some of the work that they're doing at North Park. Each school is engaging in similar work. So, that means that we have equity leads at every single building, including pre-K all the way up to grade 12. And then, we have our district equity team. So, the leads kind of come together, support one another, share their positive experiences, network, provide resources, things like that. So, what do they do? What do the equity leads do in Columbia Heights? As I mentioned before, we've had a sub-s shortage. It's been difficult to send teachers out. And so, we're working on doing a lot of in-house and onsite professional development. So, our equity leads have reached a certain capacity to be able to talk about and lead and learn within their buildings. So, they're providing, they're helping to provide professional development onsite in different events. So, for example, book studies, also specific teaching strategies. Three big things for our district, the equity leads are helping to implement and support and lead in their buildings, the AVID implementation, college and career readiness benchmarks, and the life skills that I mentioned earlier. They're also helping to lead and support the inclusive curriculum and instruction that I've presented to you previously. For example, the Native American Curriculum and Books that we have put in place in many of our classrooms. And then, measuring of our own cultural competence. So, what does this mean, right? So, this year, this fall, the Teaching and Learning Leadership Team took an assessment of their own cultural competence. So, this assessment is called the Intercultural Development Inventory. So, it's really taking this kind of theoretical or almost vague, what is cultural competence, right? How can we measure it? So, that's what the Intercultural Development Inventory, or the IDI, does. And so, approximately 40 staff members or leads throughout the district, again, from pre-K all the way up to 12th grade, took this assessment. And so, we get different kinds of results. A group result, which is anonymous, and then, if the individual so chooses, they can get their individual result as well. So, our group, the Teaching and Learning Leadership Team, came out above national average for cultural competence. So, now, this is some work I've been doing for several years, and I've never had this result before. I've only always had a result for any kind of group that I've worked with right in the middle, never above as a group. I mean, this is average, right? So, some will be above, some will be below. So, our average score was above national, which to me really shows that the work that the equity leads in the district, you know, thinking about distributed leadership, it's not one of us up here saying, we should do this, we should do this, it's good for kids. It's distributed throughout our district, and people are really having, you know, they're really passionate, and they'll go the extra mile to go on their own and learn. I've heard of teachers taking courses at the university, or Saturday session, or different opportunities that they've organized on their own time to learn about this issue and see what they can do in addition. So, needless to say, I was pretty excited about this. Okay. So, I'm going to go back to AVID as another concrete strategy that we've shared a lot with here at the board level. So, just as a reminder, the mission of AVID is to close the achievement gap through rigorous coursework and intentional teaching of organization and different academic and study skills, right? So, giving kids access to rigorous coursework so that they can continue to grow. In comparison, each year, WMAP offers, as I mentioned before, multiple opportunities to go to Beyond Diversity. Now, AVID provides national data that shows that they're proven success, right, for our kids. At this point, I haven't seen that similar, concrete, national data that shows that the Glenn Singleton Model of Beyond Diversity translate, correlates directly to academic success for students. So, at this point, by investing and working with AVID, we've made a direct impact with our own kids, right? We've impacted their lives, and we've impacted their futures. So, all of the work that we've done in the area of equity, last summer, there was a transition with WMAP, we were really interested to see, okay, we're above the national average in cultural competency, we've, we've worked, done all kinds of work with our equity leads and our equity teams. So, we were really interested to see how the new WMAP could enhance the work that we're already doing and push us even farther. So, the new WMAP has developed a rating system. And so, the rating system, let's see, I've got, I've got a note here, routes, which will determine our routes to educational equity, is a four quadrant model. And so, basically, wherever the districts are rated by WMAP, they fall into one of the four quadrants. So, Quadrant A, foundational knowledge; Quadrant B, skill application; Quadrant C, higher-level knowledge; and then, Quadrant B is, or Quadrant D, excuse me, is everything in the previous quadrants, or Quadrant B and C, plus on-call consultancy. So, based on the consultant work from the Education Reform Enterprises, the consultant hired by WMAP, and the review of MCA data, Columbia Heights was placed into Quadrant A, so foundational knowledge. So, that leads us to think about what are, what would we be missing out on in Quadrant B, C, and D? So, that's application tasks, higher-level knowledge workshops, and on-call consultancy would not be available if we're, because we would be placed in Quadrant A. So, it leads us to think about our classrooms and how, in our classrooms, we have students at different academic levels. And we know that here in Columbia Heights, when it comes to equity work, we have staff at different levels on the continuum, right, on their journey. And so, we want to provide different kinds of supports for our staff when it comes to equity. So, based on all of our equity work that I've presented and our current data, we disagree that Columbia Heights would fall into Quadrant A. We see this as a mismatch, or somehow, there's a disconnect of this rating based on an external reviewer's MCA, a look at their MCA. And we also, it's our understanding that most of the districts in WMAP fell within Quadrant A as well. And so, it just brings up some questions and wonder how that determination was really So, taking a geographic look at the WMAP Consortium, we get another snapshot of where Columbia Heights falls within the group. So, you can see us there on the far northeastern edge of WMAP, which is about 30 miles away from Eden Prairie. So, the difference, however, in our districts span far beyond mileage alone. What our districts, what our students in our district are facing in our inner-ring suburb, really inner-city setting, is dramatically different from what some of the other students much farther away within our same consortium face on a daily basis. So, here's an example of percentages of students. So, this is a list of all of the WMAP districts and the percentages of students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. And then, also, we added the percentage of non-weight students because that's, that's directly tied to achievement and integration funding, so that's relevant there. So, looking at this data, you can see the discrepancies and you can see the differences. And with Brooklyn Center opting out, the discrepancies would be even greater. So, from where we sit to where some of the other districts sit on this graph, you can see that we'd have very different needs.
I'm going to go ahead and touch on some of the financial pieces and talk about transportation a little bit as it relates to WMAP. There's definitely some information, I believe false information out there when we talk about our transportation, talking about savings that we would get because we're not transporting our students. So, you know, the question is, is the district saving money by discontinuing transportation for resident students attending fair schools? Well, that's no. That's not true at all. We received direct funding to cover any costs that we use for transporting kids over to fair schools, and that came from the state of Minnesota. The district transport, transportation costs have actually increased in 2015, 16 because of less efficient routing by not going to the fair schools. And the reason I say that is, most of our schools, we get, most of our buses on a daily basis, we get four hours of use of those buses, two hours in the morning, two in the afternoon, and I can run two routes with each of these buses. And now, since we're not running the second tier down into the, down to fair, I'm only using that bus one time in the morning, that, those, there's two particular buses. So, I'm paying a higher rate, actually, for those two buses, which I got reimbursement for before. So, there is no savings whatsoever with the kids now that we're not transporting to fair school. What we've done here is kind of gone through the WMAP service benefits and value. This is the information that we received from them. First of all, we have a service that they are offering up for our district, and then, they have a stated market value, which the WMAP believes is of value to our school district. And then, of course, we're, we're trying to measure and see what kind of value are we actually getting for these services right now in the current year that we're in. So, you can see right at the first line, cultural collaborative workshops. This is workshops that we've gone to quite a, quite a few times here in the last few years. There's a cost of $220 per employee who go to these workshops, plus, WMAP does cover our sub-cost for that day, which runs close to almost $150 for a sub for a day. But you can see, at this point, we've only had three go, and so, we've, you know, we've saved about $1,000 in value from WMAP for this service. When we look at the next level, the Equity Leadership Training, WMAP's saying, yeah, we have, you know, 18,000 per cohort plus a customization fee of 7,500. Well, this is something we already have established, so there actually is no value to the school district for this service. Looking at student programs, we've used several different student programs in the past. This year, the only student program we are using is the Civil Rights Research Experience, which is, it's a very good program, and we have four students participating in this, and this is a $3,000 value to the school district, and these students will be doing this, this coming spring. The mock lab, that's actually a new proposal. This is something that none of the districts have used up to this point. These aren't in place yet. We really don't know exactly, we're looking, we need more information to really make a true determination on this. The question is, would we even qualify for this, given the basic rating that we received as being in the Quadrant A? Global Ready Networks, $4,000 per site. This is something we say is a good thing. We don't do this right now, but if we do do it, we would do this in-house. So, there's actually no value from WMAP for this. We look at coaching and consulting, we're talking about 175,000. We need some more information here too, because we can't figure out how this value would be that much money. But a lot of this is already occurring in-house. So, this, again, I don't think there's any value here that we're going to receive. Extension resources, a new proposal. Again, I guess, we see this as a good, as a good thing, but because of a sub-s shortage, it's just something we probably cannot participate in at this time. So, it's zero value. Data monitoring and analysis, again, a new proposal. We get some of the costs that they feel that would be benefit our school district. But for us, our issue is, we already have an assessment coordinator in-house, and we have an additional position that we receive value through District 916, which we're already a collaborative member. So, again, there's no value, I don't think, we're going to get here from WMAP for this type of a service.
If I might just add on this one, and that is for four points of contact at 182.4. If, if we did that, that surpasses both contracts, both what we would have for a person here and paying and collaborating with WMAP. So, it just seems unrealistic, and we've had one experience with this person already, and we're, it wasn't a $45,000 experience. So...
No, the person that's doing the, that's helping us through 916, she's wonderful. I mean, she's got all the qualifications and more, and it's great to be able to collaborate in the neighborhood.
Yes.
If I may, the person from 916 has already been out to our district three times this year and has collaborated with a team, a team of us, and then also, working with our district assessment coordinator. So, I agree, we are seeing quite a bit of value there.
Yes.
Just kind of, you can see an overview of the kind of money that we're spending over at WMAP. We were spending $19 per pupae unit, which was amounted for us at $62,605 on a yearly basis. Now, this new year, they have dropped the price down to $16 per pupae unit. So, you can see that has dropped to 52.7, so about $53,000. But as what, as you see what we just went through, per semester, our values of, value of the services that we received is about $1,000, and we're kind of forecasting we'll see about $4,000 when we look at the second semester, which is a value of about $5,000 for the year, which isn't even 10% of our membership fee. So, I think we're, we're feeling a little shorted when it comes to the value that we're getting for the payment that we're making for the membership fee.
So, with that, what could some of our options be? As I mentioned earlier, with the new Achievement and Integration Rule, there's some flexibility and possibilities for creativity with what we can do, both at the state, at the Capitol level and the State Department of Education. So, here's a list of possible future options to explore, not limiting though, this, not limited to this list. So, one option, we could implement our achievement and integration work on our own. We could collaborate with one other district. We could explore memberships with other existing integration districts, such as the East Metro Integration District, or E-MID. We could explore a possible expansion of the partnership with the North Suburban Alliance. Or we could do some combination of this list. Those are possible other ideas. Two other just kind of facts to put out there, on October 21st, 2015, WMAP staff asked Columbia Heights to sign a commitment letter to continue with WMAP for a period of three years, so June 2016 to June 2019. And then, just as part of the environment that we're in right now, recently, on November 6th, 2015, a lawsuit was filed against the state of Minnesota for racial and socioeconomic segregation, also persistent achievement gaps and enrollment practices. So, that's something that we're waiting to see hap, what will happen with that and how long will that take to resolve. So, given that WMAP has asked for a three-year letter of commitment, and given the revised WMAP model overlay is not congruent with the approved Columbia Heights Public Schools Strategic Roadmap and integration plans already in place or planned, given the opportunities for choice and collaboration with the new WMAP model have decreased, given that Columbia Heights Public Schools demographics has changed substantially over the last 20 years and is less reflective of the other districts in the collaborative, given that in Columbia Heights, 25% of students qualify for EL services and 18% qualify for special education services, WMAP does not provide comprehensive supports or programs in this area, given that the geographic distance is too expansive to have significant and meaningful collaboration, and given that as customers of WMAP, the return on membership investment is minimal, given the cost of benefit analysis for what is, what we are receiving versus what we are spending in WMAP is not in balance, given that Achievement and Integration Rule revision allows for greater flexibility for districts with 20% diversity or better, and given there is an impending lawsuit against the state of Minnesota, including some of the WMAP-member districts, and at this point in time, knowing what we know, the administration recommends that Columbia Heights Public Schools explores other integration and equity options for the 2016, 2017 school year, and the administration recommends that Columbia Heights School Board considers sending a resolution to the Chair of the WMAP Joint Powers Board prior to December 30th, 2015, indicating that Columbia Heights Public Schools will withdraw from WMAP Joint Powers Board and membership as of June 30th, 2016.
I would just like to say a few words on this. This has been a really hard and well-thought-out recommendation coming from the admin team. It comes down to choice. Many people in the collaborative, other districts would like to have some choice. They're feeling that the one-size-fits-all model, even though there's diversity or flexibility within the plan... or flexibility within the plan in the quadrants, depending upon what quadrant you're in, isn't exactly what will work congruently with a lot of different strategic roadmaps across the districts. And I think Member Landwear has heard that at, at meetings as well, and certainly in our superintendent meetings, that's discussed. That what many districts, or at least some, would like to see is a reduction in the fee and more choice in the menu, so that more things could happen for districts, so that we could acknowledge things that are underway, like our equity teams and things that are doing good work, and access collaboratively, much like 916 does, a partnership that says, well, some of you want to do this, let's put our resources together and make this possible. And cost for the $16 at this point in time, because we want to make sure that we're letting you know that we're not sure if we're being good, if, if this particular option is the best way to financially steward the funds we have in integration, that you have time to think about that. When you see our return on investment thus far, although it could improve, I don't know if it will improve substantially, that we'd be, we would be this year or possibly next year spending all of the dollars that we would be allocating to WMEP in participation. And it also boils down to customer service too, because in the past, we have felt, and that is why there'll be meetings tomorrow, is that it's hard to be listened to from the standpoint of the model has evolved. And superintendents have asked at the superintendent's advisory if we could maybe back off a little bit on the model and have some choice. And it, it's been very well-stated by the executive director that they really think that that's resistance to change, and that we should be buying into the model, and that we would, we would find, I want to say, find our freedom there. But that is not being taken well by many of the districts, and I'll just speak for this, this district, that we would really like to have a lower basic price. This is an admin making recommendations to you, and some choice in what it is we need to do. An example would be in Avid. We have talked with WMEP for a number of years of saying, could we all get together and do some work in Avid and cut the cost and do some of the regional trainings here? And that's never happened. And ironically, it's going to happen now and next year, but without our collaborative really being involved in the mix of that. So we'll be doing that on our own. Avid is a big part of our equity plan. And so we have to have money to sustain that across all the lines. And so there are going to be meetings tomorrow. As a matter of fact, we're going to have the Chair and the Vice Chair of WMEP, the Executive Director, and at least four of the 10 superintendents meeting to talk about some of these issues. Tomorrow night, there is the regular scheduled Joint Powers Meeting, and I think there's going to be at least some conversation about governance and where the organization model is going to go, because it is funded on school district's money, so it needs to be aligned with school district missions. But we're not sure where the model itself is going to lie, because the staff has been hired, and they are there even though we're not accessing them. There's a lot of overhead over there, and I think Ted, is it a four or five-year lease has been signed for the building itself?
Five years.
Okay. So I mean, there are some things in play that even if people want to change, there's going to be some things that are going to make it difficult for change. We can be optimistic, but yet we want to be completely supportive of you as a board in saying that it probably would be a good idea for us to reconvene next Tuesday and see if any additional information that are gleaned from tomorrow's meetings and discussions would have an impact on any of the, the recommendation that's here. But if we do not, and I have the joint powers agreement out in front of me, if we do not submit a resolution from this board saying that we have an intent to, intent to withdraw, we will see the same kind of participation and costs this year and all of the following year, which means that that 10% value that we're seeing now would be exacerbated by next year. And so we bring it to you as a governance issue for you, and as a, it's better to be safe than sorry issue for all of us. They're saying, we should probably really take a look at the meetings and indicate, if we feel we must, that we would like more choice, a lower basic rate, or we, we will need to explore other options. And so that would mean a resolution. Minneapolis has done this repeatedly, so it is not like this is a new thing at WMEP. I think, I can remember back, I think in the last eight years, there's probably been at least four out of those years where Minneapolis has said, we're going to give you a letter, we're thinking about leaving. I know over in East Metro Integration District, there were letters of intent over there that were given and then withdrawn, so you haven't, you have options by the end of the year. But if we don't do anything by December 30th, then really we're committed to this model and taking the money that we get from integration in this model and committing it to the WMEP organization for a minimum of two years. And that's why we bring it to you tonight.
I would just like to add, I remember when this came forward and they were talking about the new model, that in the new model, they proposed changes directly affecting specifically naming Columbia Heights School District without even consulting us on what they plan, where they plan to put us. And I, I was ready to basically send my resignation letter, a resolution at that moment. Of course, cooler heads prevailed, and we got more of a thorough analysis, so I do appreciate that. But I, that's the way I feel about it. I don't see value, collaboration, consideration. Can I come up with any other terms? Can we add?
Customer service.
Customer service, let's stay with the Cs.
Yes.
For clarification, I guess simplifying it for me maybe is that your recommendation right now is as the model stands and what we're getting out of it, the, the value is not there. And your recommendation is, is that we look at other options. And if we understand what the bylaws are saying is, is that if we don't give some type of a letter saying we're planning on withdrawing by the end of this month, that we're locked in for two, the remainder of this and another full school year, those dollars are locked in and there, so.
Just to clarify, is about $105,000 we're talking?
For the two years.
For two years that we'd be locked into.
Just to clarify too, that the Dr. Matier, who's the executive director, has repeatedly said that she's, wants WMEP to be customized to each district. So thank you for this presentation. It certainly doesn't seem like WMEP is being customized to Columbia Heights. So I think we need to get to the bottom of whether, what's true. Is it going to be customized or not? If it isn't, then, then it makes all the sense in the world for us to look somewhere else. If we do send a letter, I'd, I'd recommend that we, you know, leaving the, the collaborative, I recommend that we mean it, and we actually do leave the collaborative. I understand what Minneapolis has, we sent it the letter, but from an integrity standpoint, I think it's important, and for WMEP's planning purposes, that we, we actually mean what we say. So I just want to throw that out there. The, the collaborative also, there's much discussion, as you said, among other districts. And I think this is going to be an issue that we will discuss next, or tomorrow night. And I'm just very concerned by what you presented. They need to be, you know, we've talked about being customer-friendly on the Joint Powers Board, and if they're not, then, then we need to think about something, another approach.
I guess just to build on, or to comment on that, I guess my, my, to me, if this is going to stay the way it is, then yeah, we should be, move, move on and look at other options. But at the same time, if for some reason between now and when we would, you know, be stepping away from WMEP, if the customer service was there, the collaboration was there, the choices were there, and the value was there, and it ended up being our best choice and what's best for our students, then I would be open to saying that, you know, let's revisit this as we move forwards. I mean, to, to say, if we say we're going to leave, we're going to leave no matter what. I don't know that I'm 100% behind that. If what, if what were to come back is what's best for, you know, for our district, so.
Yeah, and I agree with that as well. I'm just saying from a planning standpoint for, for WMEP. The other option is, I believe is, WMEP has given districts, at least there's been talk about it, is for districts to purchase services even though they're not part of the collaborative. So perhaps that's something that, that may be a reality down the road.
On that note, there's, there's a lot of options apparently being cubbyholed into this little quadrant A. Would we even be able to participate in those options even if we wanted to pay for them separately? And shouldn't we already be able to get them as part of our membership? I'm confused. It, it seems like, it's like, yes, we want you here, but we're only going to give you, you know, you're, you're not going to get the full meal, you're just going to get, you know, the peanut butter and jelly sandwich, you know, you're not going to get access to anything else. Is that what I'm hearing?
So at this time, at the premiere at the WMEP location, we were, we were told what the four quadrants were, and we were told that we were, we've been identified in quadrant A. What is all involved, the list, the menu of options that are within quadrant A has not been revealed to us at this time?
I feel like they leave us with much of a choice. I mean, other than to look at other options.
But they're not going to give us these, what we would be buying into until, would we be getting this before? Our letter of intent needs to go through?
As Superintendent Kelly mentioned, there's a, there's a board meeting, Joint Powers Board meeting tomorrow evening. I'm, I'm, don't know if that's going to be discussed at that meeting or not, or what kind of information they will be releasing prior to, to that date.
I'm not comfortable with this.
I would like to just tag on to that. It's a good question. Many times, we've had a lot of questions, and there's not a lot of answers. Now, in fairness to Dr. Matier and staff, they're new, and they were trying to put this together. But, and Member Landwear is exactly right, that Dr. Matier does talk a lot about customization, but she talks about customization within the, this particular four quadrants model. And so where the business model is different with a lower rate and a cafeteria plan is not as appealing right now. And, and the executive director may change her mind, but right now she's really talking about customization around this model. And so that's a question for our district and for others as well, is will, when the customization is complete, will it really fit the needs? I want to go back, a lot of people wound up on quadrant A, some wound up on quadrant B. I think as you went into C and D, not like everybody was sitting around saying, where did you land? But there seems to be less. So it seems to be a growth model that you might work your way through these things in three to four years. But what, one of the things that I do hear from superintendents across the board is, we have plans on the ground, we have plans underway. We need to spend our money on some of the things that we have already been planning. For us, it's continued support for our equity coaches and our Avid model, but it is the same for other districts that they, that, WMEP, this new birth doesn't mean that districts haven't been working in equity for a very, very long time. And so the customization, unless things change, and we are going to have some meetings, would be around the service model that they are rolling out, because that's the staff that they have. Unless the WMEP Joint Powers Board would take a stand and saying, we need to go back to the drawing board and look at some different models. And I certainly would never speak for the WMEP Joint Powers Board on that.
Well, I would think even something like that would take time. And we don't have the luxury of time when it comes to, at least to this resolution. And again, keep an open mind, and if they do take a stand and all of a sudden things start to change, could certainly look at that. But I guess my personal thought is, is that what I would like to see is, is that, you know, next, at our next meeting, that a resolution is brought forward with the intent to withdraw, with the, I mean, with the understanding that there's hopefully going to be much more information provided to us next week after the meetings that transpire. But if nothing is evidently changing, or obviously for sure, I mean, it almost has to be a guaranteed thing that we follow through with. My thought is, is that we follow through with the resolution to a withdrawal on something like that.
I'm going to even go one step further. If I don't know what we're buying, I don't want to spend a penny on it.
Which would again, that would, we would have that.
Yeah.
The luxury or the ability to say.
I think, I think we could, I think that the district could better utilize those funds.
The only, the only concern, well, that's not a concern, but just to realize that if we do withdraw, we'll only be able to participate in the governance up till June 30th. So if we're okay with buying services as we need them without necessarily having a say in how WMEP is governed, then that's the way we should go.
Do we have a say in how it's governed right now? It seems to be tapped down.
We have one vote on the Joint Powers Board.
Any thoughts or discussion or questions for these guys?
I just appreciate the thorough information. That was a very good presentation about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up will be the truth in taxation hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on, oh, never mind, blue cards. If you would like to speak regarding the, the truth in taxation hearing, I would need you to fill out a blue card and present it to Dawn, and she's walking back over there. So we'll start with Bill with your presentation.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight we get to talk about budgets and levies. So we can have a lot of fun, right? Okay. This is something we knew every year. We need to come out and give some details before we vote on our tax levy for the following year. Again, we are here to create a world of opportunity for every learner. Of course, that certainly ties back to the funding that we bring forth in the school district for our staffing. So tonight, we're really talking about integrity when we look at our core values. The truth in taxation law has really three pieces. First, we need to talk about the current budget and how it relates to the prior year revenue expenditures, and then talk about the future levy. So tonight we'll be talking about the pay 2016 levy, which is technically for the 2016-17 school year, which we collect in the next calendar year. And then, of course, we have to allow for public comment after that. So let's go right into our budget. And you can see, I, I just, we just had our audit, so all the fiscal 2015 numbers are right out of our audit book. And you can see in our unassigned general fund, when we look at our revenues, you actually see a decrease in our revenues from 2015 to 2016. And you're saying, well, how can that happen? We had 2% new money and less money showing up. And what that all ties back to actually to WMEP. Because we had students that are our resident students, which we took to WMEP, and we collected the funds for those, and then we turned around and paid tuition to WMEP in the form of about $300,000. So now we don't collect that money anymore. That money goes straight to Robbinsdale or Minneapolis as an open-rolled student. So that's why you're not seeing an increase in our, in our revenues in our unassigned area. When we look at our restricted, that's our capital, it's our federal programming, pretty much the same from one year to the next. So again, for the year that we're in, 2016, we're seeing about an $81,000 decrease from the year before when we look at our general fund revenues. Looking at food service, little increase in revenues, not a lot. As you know, we increased our, our food prices by a dime. But again, only 20% of our students actually buy lunch, so it's a very small number. Community ed, we're seeing a little bit of a decrease in our revenues from one year to the next. In 2015, there was still a little bit of money coming through from the Century 21st grant, 21st grant, which is now, is gone. And I think part of this is we're just trying to be more conservative, but some of the revenues came through the last couple of years. Building fund, you're seeing last couple of years. Building fund, you're seeing a large change there, and that's our new levy. 2016 is the first year that we have our new capital projects levy available for us to use. So you're seeing the increase in our revenues. Debt service, again, revenues are down a little bit, mainly because we have extra dollars in our fund that we, in our debt service fund, which we don't need. So some of that money goes back to our taxpayers because we don't need it. And that goes back to the, the state allows us to levy for 105% of what we need to make our bond payments, to cover any type of a shortage we'd have for somebody not paying their taxes. So on a year-to-date basis, we're usually giving a little bit of dollars back to our, our taxpayers because we didn't need the full hun, you know, 105%. We switch over to our expenditures. You're seeing the expenditures here, down 300. Again, that's ties right back to WMEP. We're not paying any tuition to WMEP. Now, we're just paying that membership fee as though we're paying. We're seeing a little increase in our, in our federal dollars and our, actually, and our capital, they're tied together here under restricted dollars. But this increase mainly is tied to our capital dollars for this year that we're in right now. But overall, you see our general fund is actually, we're gonna spend 183,000 less dollars than we did last year. Food service relates about the same. We see a little bit of increase in our food costs, mainly because we have a little more volume because we're selling a few more meals, tying back to our small increase in our, in our enrollment. Building fund, again, you see a big increase in our expenditures, mainly because we're spending that new capital projects levy. And that goes, that flows through our building fund. Debt service, again, a little bit of a decrease, but we haven't changed, you know, anything that we borrowed. So the bonds are pretty well flat going forward. So that's just a touch on our, our budget and what's happening with it. I wanna talk a little bit about the process of our levy. You know, first, our county assessor, they look, they determine the estimated market value of every parcel of property in, in our school district. The legislature actually sets the formulas for tax capacity. And on your particular home, your tax capacity, if it's under $500,000 your home, it's, your tax capacity is 1% of that, whatever the value of your home is. If it's over 500,000, it's, it's, the rate's at 1 and 1/4%. The state auditor then calculates the tax capacity for each parcel, as well as the total tax capacity for each school district in that particular county. Next, the legislature sets the formulas to determine the school district levy limits. These are the maximum amounts of taxes the school district can actually levy in each of the category. And as you know, we have a long list of categories, and we'll go through those in a few minutes. Of course, then we have MDE gets involved, Minnesota Department of Education. They calculate detailed levy limits in a school district based on the formulas approved by the legislature. And again, in MDE hands, they send us the information on the limits that we need to adopt for our final levy in December. Now, that's what we're talking about today. And really, and then, of course, the auditor, once they know our total levy, they go back and they determine the tax rate dependent on how many dollars we need to generate. So there's, there's nobody in our district that's actually paying, you know, 1% of their, their value of their home. It's more like about 40% of that. So we're a long ways from our tax capacity in our school district. But I think the reason I wanted to touch on this is really, the school district or the school board really doesn't have a lot of control in what happens with a school district levy. We're told what the limits are, we're told what the dollars are. So the dollars we're talking about tonight is what the county, the state, and MDE has told us that we can do. Touch on enrollment. We've seen some really nice enrollment, starting actually back from 2009. But we're looking like we're starting to kind of plateau, kind of level off. And when we look at the budget for the year that we're in, we did not anticipate any new students whatsoever to make sure that we're being conservative. So you can see that in 2016, our budget's rated 3,100 students, so 0% increase. But you can see, over the last few years, we're running about a 1% increase in our enrollment on a year-to-date basis. Next, tax capacity. This has been kind of a roller coaster ride since the recession. If you look back in 2011 and 12, and even 13, it was still decreasing. But back in 2012, we saw a large decrease in the tax capacity. The values of the property were really were falling here. And now in 2014, the thing with taxes too, we're always running about a year behind when we value the, the levies. But you see they're up, almost 12%. So this is good and bad news. I mean, the economy's improving. It does include our tax capacity, but this really has no bearing on the actual dollars that you would spend for taxes, at least when it comes to a school. When you talk about a county, a county or a township, you know, they actually set a rate. So as this number goes up, you actually pay more taxes. But with a school district, we take the total that we're allowed to do, and they get spread it across everybody. So as long as your value doesn't really change, you're gonna pay the same as you did the year before. Sales ratio, I just, I touch on this. Again, the sales ratio is the difference, is a ratio between what the county appraises your home at and what you can actually sell it for. So you can see back in 2010, when it was 101%, the actual values of the county were higher than what you could sell your home for. And now we're getting back to more of a normal rate where the county is usually behind in valuing homes. So we're seeing a 92.6%. The actual value of a home at the county level is 92% of what, what they, what you can sell it at, at this point in time. And a few years ago, when you go back to, you know, eight, seven, six, these sales ratios were in the 80% range quite often. But what happens is they take that, that sales ratio, and you, you take the net tax capacity, divide that sales ratio, and adjust the next tax capacity. Because the county's saying, well, if you can sell your home for more than what it's valued, well, then we should be able to tax it for more than what the county valued it. So that's what the adjusted net task, net tax capacity is all about. And you can see for 2014, that is up almost 19%. Now, we're gonna run through the levies, and we're gonna compare them to last year. Equity, our equity levy, up $21,000. And what the equity levy is, it looks at the school districts who get the most and the school districts who get the least, when we look at our operating levies. And we're kind of in the lower end of that. So there's actually a formula that allows us to levy a little bit more, because we can't do the same as some of the districts that are levying up to $1,500 per student. We can't do that. So this isn't a huge number, but it certainly helps. It helps equalize revenue across the state of Minnesota. Next, location revenue, referendum revenue. This was all put together. This was actually one piece just a couple of years ago. The state decided that they really weren't funding schools as much as they should. So they started this location revenue, and really, where it affected schools that didn't have an operating levy, they could go ahead and levy this area up to $424 per student. So we're just seeing it in two places. So we're still generating the same dollars as we did before, but we're seeing it in two different, two different pieces of the levy. We're also seeing an increase in these two pieces. You see that the location revenue is up 120, and our referendum's up to almost 290. And what this is, is a change from the legislature in the percent of aid that we receive from them. And it's a tiered system, so it is a little confusing. But on the first $550,000 that we levy, the property owners, we, we would levy 44%, and we would get, you know, 56% from the state of Minnesota. Well, this year, that shifted, where now the levy portion is 47%, and the, and the aid is only 53. And that happened also with a referendum. And then there's a second tier, so the next $880,000 is at, now up to 77% levy. And then, of course, tier three, anything over that is at 100% levy, no equalizing factor for aid. We look at our student achievement levy. This is actually the old general education levy they brought back, the legislature brought back about three years ago. It's not a big number, but it is part of the aid that's now as levy. They are talking about, the legislature's talking about eliminating this again in the next legislative session. We kinda hope that happens. Abatement adjustments, what this really is, is from the county. It goes to, it goes to taxes that we haven't collected in the past. Now, we are collecting, so we get a credit back. Other, that's really a TIF or tax increment financing. When a business comes into a, to an area, and the city wants them to come in, they'll, they'll let them not pay tax for a while. So, and then we turn around and get a credit. And then this is just an adjustment. So that adjusts back and forth every year. So that's what it's about. So this is really the piece, this is really the piece of our levy that's increasing, and it goes back to the top three areas where we're seeing a big change in the levy percentage compared to aid. Now, we're going to the designated area, integration. If you remember, last year, the integration kind of got doubled up because the legislature had, had omitted the opportunity for us to levy for integration. So last year, we had an adjustment, which really was double. And now we're back down to the 300,000. So it's about a third. So we levy 300,000, we get $600,000 in aid. Safe school levy, what this is, is money that we levy for RSO officers in our, both our middle school and the high school. This also goes for security, so cameras and so forth in our buildings. Reemployment, these are actual costs of unemployment that we have to pay out to employees who are now, no longer here. Operating capital. Again, there's a small shift in operating capital. The levy portion is up a little bit. It was $45,000 worth, but it is up. So we're seeing a small increase. Health and safety, this goes back to, I talked to you earlier, the actual amount for 2016 is all adjustment because of the way that they're changing the way that we're receiving the funding. So even though it's about the same, it's actually a big adjustment, and it's a catch-up to get all our health and safety revenue back, so we get rid of that negative fund balance that we usually carry. Deferred maintenance, this is where then, where we're seeing the change in the way that we're getting deferred maintenance dollars for maintenance to our buildings. You see there that increase. Lease levy, this is from Highland Elementary School. When we got the estimates doing that project, the budget came way in under budget. So we had dollars left over afterwards. We're giving that back to the taxpayer. So that's 385,000, just directly going back as a decrease in our levy, because we don't need those dollars. Of course, then our capital projects levy is here. Community ed, this is based on the population of our, of our district, has the same amount forever, was every 10 years. Every census that comes around, we get a new number. But you, what you're seeing here is, again, is a shift in the amount that's between aid and levy. We're up now, is 100% levy for community education, where we had some aid last year. Youth service and after school program, and that's been 100%, and it's been the same number for quite a few years. Early childhood, here we saw a small increase. We also saw a small increase in aid. So we actually have some new revenue here, which is good news for community education. Home, home visiting is actually, this is actual cost for our home visits, for our early childhood kids. And you're seeing, we actually saw a small decrease there. The, the child age care, we talked about this in the last meeting. These are actual dollars that are spent to support the special ed students who are on afternoon, are after-school programs with community ed. So you're seeing that increase there. And then debt service, as we talked a little earlier tonight, that is down a little bit, mainly because we don't need it all. That's in the fund balance. So we're paying a little bit. So when we get to the bottom here, you're seeing an increase overall in our general fund of 435,088 in community ed, and a decrease of about 60 at our debt service. And this amounts to 5.4% total in our levy. Now, this doesn't necessarily relate to 5% increase in your taxes. It depends on what happens to the value of your home. We also get a lot of fiscal disparities for the metro area. So most people are gonna be paying less than 5.4%. But of course, we can't, we don't have the formulas for everybody's house. I just, to tell you, it's going up 5.4%. I always like to show this, just to get some reference. If you look back in 2001, we were actually levying $12 million on our community for this, for this, for Columbia Heights Public Schools. And even now, in 2016, we're still lower also even from back in 2010. So overall, as you see, it, we kind of bounces up and down, but we certainly have less taxes, almost half of what we did, you know, 15 years ago. So I think that's good news. So with that, is there any questions?
Just have a comment. And thank you for the transparency and for explaining all that. And in the work session, we talked about how most of the changes have been because of the legislature, actually, all of them, as far as I know. So given that, because we have to levy more through the legislative directive, that's how essentially we come to the 5.4%.
That's, that's correct. And, and like we said earlier to it, it really stems back to the, the change in the equalizing factor in our operating levies. Because it's, it's an increase of about 4% to 5% just in that area. So this, the total of the 400,000 that, that is generated as an increase for next year, if you, well, if we go back, it's like $430,000 just in those three areas. Everything else kind of goes back and forth, and they kind of shake out. But those three pieces are increases, and that definitely comes from the state of Minnesota.
Is it still true that if we don't levy that amount, then we also not only lose that amount, but also state aid?
That is correct. If, if, if we don't levy the amounts that are, that are on these sheets, we actually lose aid because of it.
Thank you. Of course, that'd be a big hit for us.
That would be a, a big hit.
Any other questions for Bill?
I would actually just like to thank you for finally explaining adjusted net tax capacity in a way that I could understand, because I didn't quite understand that piece of it. I appreciate that.
I'm glad.
Maybe just hang in case the gentleman that wants to speak has any questions for you. But we have one person on Willis-Honky that you wanted to address the board. If you'd like to, come on up and grab a seat next to Bill and.
Probably loud enough that you can hear me from here.
Unless anybody else has anything else for Bill. Okay, we will move on to our action items. And first up on the agenda, and I think it's different in the board book. I have the suspended, but I have Castle Heights in this one first here.
Castle Heights was listed as.
Is the first one. But we'll just, we'll go in order off the agenda that's posted here. So the first action item would be the new suspended deleted courses for 1617. Xena.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. The board was presented with the list of courses that we are proposing to add or suspend in the upcoming school year. There were no classes that were proposed for deletion. So you have the list in your packet. I can go ahead and go through them. So we're looking at the addition of music appreciation at the high school level. And again, that's aligned to the early college programming. Dynamics Ensemble, which would be a contemporary vocal music at the high school. Introduction to Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Related Careers, that would be an add at the high school. College Readiness Support Class, which would be additional English and reading support for 10th graders. That is a follow-up to the current 9th grade support class in math. Online Physical Education for Student Athletes, that would be an add at the high school. And then pilot for the high school would be Minnesota Outdoor Connection Course. And then, due to low enrollment trends, courses to suspend for next school year at the high school would be Basic Home Wiring, Sports Entertainment Marketing, A+ Computer Technology A and B, Sales, Marketing, and Promotions. And then, moving to middle school courses, would be the addition of 8th grade honors programming in all four core areas, math, English, social studies, and science. And then, at elementary, looking at a possible expansion of the current media arts pilot. So with that, I'm here to ask for approval of the courses.
Start with motion to move that forward, please. Ted?
Second.
No, thank you. Discussion or questions?
Have there been any comments from community members that you're aware of, or the administration's aware of on these that would be a negative to adopting these or this course of action?
Not at this time, particularly with the course deletions. There was very limited or very small or no enrollment whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You get to stay there, Xena. Next up on this is the Heights Lights name change.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. What a great way to start our school board meeting this evening with the very students that generated our, the idea for the proposed new name for the Heights Lights portion of the school board. So the board was presented with a recommend- So, the board was presented with a recommendation for changing the names of Height, the name of Heights Lights to Highlander Highlights. Students at Columbia Heights High School went through a process in journalism class to generate ideas and then narrow the ideas to this recommendation, and we got to see them this evening in all of their glory. So, I'm here this evening to ask for approval for the name change to Highlander Highlights.
Okay, can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
Some move.
Second.
Lauren, Ted, second. Discussion or questions?
Again, I just, I'm thrilled that the students have come up with this and they've got their input.
Here, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is the Pay 2015 levy. Thank you, Xena. And Bill is back.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, I ask you to approve the Pay 2016 levy, as I just presented during our hearing.
Motion to move that forward, please.
Some move.
Molly?
Second.
Lauren? Discussion. Okay. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I think you get to stay, though. Next up is the police liaison contract.
Yeah, I almost forgot about that. Again, I talked to you about this at the last meeting. We have a contract with the city of Columbia Heights for two RSO officers, one at our high school, one at our middle school. Administration really feels this is a great program. There's a lot of good having these officers in our buildings. You see the contract I put in your packet. It's, the verbiage is exactly the same as the year before, except for the rates. On the last page of the contract, that you see what we're paying the officers, and we only pay for the time they're actually here. So, we don't pay the summer hours or anything like that. So, but we're seeing 2.6 increase in the total payment going to those officers. So, tonight, I'd like to have you approve that contract.
Ask for a motion to move that forward.
Some move.
Ted?
Second.
Molly? Second. Discussion or questions?
Understand that the increase is proposed by the city of Columbia Heights? Is that correct?
Yes, the dollar amount comes directly from the city, and it's just, it's based on exactly what they pay the officers. So, a 2% increase is just the salary change for those officers.
And that's consistent with our budget as well as far as our portion?
That is correct, yes.
Well, I certainly support having a officer, you know, safety is number one with our district, so I think this goes, really contributes to that, so I'm supportive of this.
I think that, and just to comment on the police department itself, that the collaboration with that, the police department, I mean, aside from the liaisons, the things that they do and they provide for the school, you know, at no additional cost, I think, is, not that it factors into this, but, you know, in my mind, it does, is that we're, you know, just, the relationship that we have with the police department is worth this and then some, so.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're still there, Bill. Just moving on.
I'm moving here.
Next up is the Castle Heights Bridge Team Recommendations. Board will be asked to approve the Castle Heights Bridge Team Recommendations. We've got a bunch of it, so.
Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin, members of the board, thank you for inviting us back again this evening to discuss the former Castle Heights site Bridge Team Recommendations. So, our mission, obviously, is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core values that we're addressing are community and collaboration, as well as respect and innovation, to see what we're, exciting things we're going to come up with for the new former site.
So, a reminder that the school board charged at the November 24, 2015 board meeting that the Castle Heights Site Bridge Team would develop a plan for the site, which could include a connection with or expansion of Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard, perhaps an outdoor classroom and/or a performance space or outdoor theater area. The Columbia Heights Public School Board is open to the inclusion of pollinator or other gardens, benches, shaded areas for sitting, buddy benches, and/or sponsored bricks. This evening, we come forward with a couple of recommendations for you to reflect on and then act on. Our recommendation is the nomination of Mary Rose Granland as the community representative co-chair for the Bridge Team, a nomination of Principal Michelle DeWitt as the Columbia Heights Public School Representative co-chair, that the Bridge Team's work would begin in January 2016, that there would be a charrette scheduled in February 2016 to work on the design, and that the school board would be given information about the Bridge Team's work and the charrette in May of 2016 regarding recommendations for the site plan, and lastly, that the Bridge Team would seek appropriate collaborative partners to fund and/or support the project. So, this evening, we are here to ask you to accept the two nominations, the nomination of Mary Rose Granland as the community representative co-chair for the Bridge Team, and the nomination of Principal Michelle DeWitt as the Columbia Heights District Representative co-chair for the Bridge Team to start off with, and then also accepting the proposed schedule for the work of the Bridge Team.
And I have the same, I think, only just written differently. The school board is asked to approve the recommendations through the community representative and the district representative, and then we're also being asked to approve the recommendation inviting members of the community in this school district to participate in the, with the Bridge Team.
Yes, that would be part of the work of the Bridge Team, is the inclusion of, the invitation put out to community members, parents, et cetera, to participate in this Bridge Team's work.
Okay. Start with a motion to move that forward.
Some move.
Second.
Molly, second. Ted, questions, discussion?
Were there any other people interested in serving as co-chairs that you know of?
These, these were the people that really expressed interest in that leadership role, and they accepted the nomination prior to this meeting.
That was going to be my question, was how did we, how did we get down to the two nominations, so.
I just want to say, I know Mary Rose Granland is passionate about this, so I think she'll be an excellent co-chair. Again, my concern is, and I know we talked about this as well, is that this be community-driven. Of course, there needs to be guidance by the school district so that the result is appropriate in terms of the constraints that the district has. Do you think Michelle, or Principal DeWitt, will be that kind of a leader or co-chair?
Like, if I can speak, I can attest to the fact that I've participated in several initiatives that she has chaired and co-chaired, the teacher evaluation process, which she's presented to the board, which was extremely collaborative. I sat as a member, and that crossed community, teachers, administration. She's very efficient, she's an excellent communicator, very collaborative, and a great listener. So, we were pleased that she expressed interest and hope that you agree with us on our recommendations.
That's great to hear, because I know it's very important to the community that they have a strong voice in this.
Anybody else? Motion on the table is to approve the representatives as recommended and community and school district participate in the Castle Heights Bridge Team. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is the superintendent's contract, and Karen Keppel is here. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I am here to present for your consideration and possible action, the next contract for Superintendent Kathy Kelly, which would be the standard three-year term. Her current contract expires June, at the end of June 2016, so this contract would be for the three years following that, which is standard in the state of Minnesota for superintendents in terms of the duration of it. You've been provided with information that was a comparison of about 25 school districts in the metro area, salary comparison, which, to review, revealed that Superintendent Kelly's salary is at the bottom of those 25 districts, even though she has more years of experience as a superintendent than more than half of the comparative salaries that you were provided with. And so, the discussions relate to making an adjustment to the base salary for the first year of this contract, to try to bring her more to a competitive level in the middle of that pack. It wouldn't be quite there, but closer to the middle than it is right now. And then, in addition to making a 2.5% increase in the first year, and a 2.25% increase in the second year of the contract, and then a 2.5% increase in the third year of the contract. We're really not looking at any particular language changes. She didn't bring any proposed changes to all of you to consider, just a salary increase. And then, there's also, one of the factors in her contract is the performance pay provision, and the discussion would be whether or not you want to change that from a flat dollar amount, as it is in the current contract, to a percentage. So, changing it to 10,000 to 5.5% of the salary, and that would be subject to her achievement of goals as are determined by you as members of the board and Superintendent Kelly. So, that is what is before you to consider moving forward with.
Start with a motion to move that forward.
Some move.
Molly?
Second.
Let me give this one to Ted. I gave you the other second.
That's fine.
Okay, discussion. Ted?
I just wanted to say that, you know, for, with regard to the percentage, percent change to performance pay versus dollar amount, lots, most of superintendent's contracts we saw included a percentage increase. So, I like that idea, because as pay goes up, a base pay, so does the incentive to meet performance goals. And so, I applaud the board on, you know, our discussions and trying to make this as fair and competitive of contract as we can. I understand this fits within our budget parameters as well, so we've looked at that. I'm, I fully expect this to pass tonight, so, but I do want to say that I, and I support, you know, the board, obviously, and the board's decision. There has been, there have been several people that have talked to me about the contract, and I've talked to, you know, I haven't gone into details, but as far as offering a contract to Superintendent Kelly again, and I've supported offering her contracts in the past, as well as a couple times. So, tonight, I want to give voice to those people who have had concerns, and I know that, again, that this will pass tonight. She's been at the helm for the, of the district for nine years. She does many things very, very well, exceedingly well. So, I'm totally, I'm totally fine with approving her for another contract in that regard, but I do want to give voice to those people who don't and have concerns, and I think that's appropriate in the democratic process that we're in. We have a diverse community, and reasonable people can disagree on things, so.
Anybody else? Thanks. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the approval of the school board organizational meeting procedures. Karen, I think you get to talk again. Just talking about our organizational meeting coming up.
Actually, if you'll just have a seat, and I'll just, in case there's a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what? There you go. That was prepared by you, it was presented by her.
Yes.
I didn't read to the bottom, Karen, I apologize.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, these materials were prepared, the Robert Tools of Orders Newly Revised were prepared by Karen Keppel, November 29, 2011, and the first Monday in January, has been prepared and revised by MSBA over the years annually. There were no changes this year, and so, that's what you have before you, you have to have operating norms for our January meeting. You've seen this in, and in, at our, as an information item, and really, what we're asking you tonight is just merely to, once again, have a motion to adopt these as your operating norms for the organizational meeting in January.
Ask for a motion to move that forward.
Some move.
Ted?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion? Mr. Ted?
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to do this, because it's important to have clarity and, and order, and this really spells things out. So, when we come to the organizational meeting, we will know, you know, what, what rules will govern, and we won't run into a situation like we've had before, where we're not sure what the result is, what the result meant. So, for the good of the district, I think this is really important.
As I understand it, we have to do it like this. This is in legislation, this is in statute. I was hoping we could wait until we had a more full board to do a full organizational meeting, but that's just not legally feasible.
Bill?
I will adopt this, obviously, and follow it.
I'm sorry?
I said, I will adopt and follow this.
Thank you.
I'm just stating my displeasure.
Did you have something else?
Oh, just for clarity, isn't it the timing that's in statute?
Correct, the timing's in statute for the annual meeting, the organizational meeting.
Okay. This, this, this procedure's not in statute, it's recommended.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Right.
Bill? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for sitting there, Karen.
You're welcome.
We are going to go into a closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the board will meet in closed session for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. So, we'll go into our closed session at 9:32. Okay, we're coming back from the closed session at 9:50 PM. And next up on the agenda is board topics. Anyone have anything for board topics? Ted?
Oh, I just, I forgot to mention during board reports that we did get a revised budget outlook for the state of Minnesota for, through Minnesota School Board Association, and now, it looks like there's a $1.206 billion available balance. It's really one point, or surplus, so it's really 1.8 billion, but there was money that was pledged as an IOU to be paid back, and so, that has to be paid back. And then, some is also pledged to be paid. And then some is also pledged to be put back towards the general savings account, I should say, you know, more or less for the state of Minnesota. So it's a big surplus, and there'll be a lot of discussion on, especially on education and where, you know, where that could be used, and as, I'm sure a bunch of other people will want that as well, so I thought that might be of interest.
I have two things. One is, is that The Lion King is going to be playing over at the high school Thursday, Friday, Saturday, $3 to get in. There is a PTO spaghetti fundraiser, I believe it's at 6:00 PM.
Friday.
On Friday, right before The Lion King. So make sure and get out there, I guess the kids are, now that's the academy that's going to be playing over at the high school.
Does the spaghetti dinner start at 6:00, or does it start a little bit earlier than that?
It might be a little bit earlier than that. I actually literally got the phone call right before I came to this board meeting.
I think that's probably going to be a little bit before that. Check the website, I'm sure Casey will make sure.
Yeah, just double-check the website. And then the other thing that I actually forgot to mention was we got a bit of an update on the design also for Pankala, and in the planning of, the planning of Carner Blue, they put in four special rooms for students, for students that were experiencing a high level of distress with the success of Carner Blue and its multi-staging de-escalation kind of a process, that when the planning of Pankala, they're only putting in one. That's how significant this difference has been. They went from four, they don't need four, so they're only going to put one in, into the new facility. So I thought that was really exciting, and I apologize, I'd forgotten to say it because I was really excited about that. So, anyway, that's it for me.
Anybody else? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:53.